All right, good morning. Good morning. I want to welcome everyone to the April 5th Planning Commission zoning hearing. To get us started today, we're very pleased to have with us Reverend Joya Abrams from Bethany United Methodist Church who's going to provide our invocation. Reverend Abrams?
Good morning. As was shared, I am Reverend Joya Abrams, and I've lived in Cobb County all of my adult life. So this is a wonderful opportunity to get to be here today. We pray for y'all in our worship services, and so it's great to be present with you, praying in person. Like I said, like you said, Bethany is at the corner of Hurtin' Hicks Road after Easter. Take a look at our church. We'll have butterflies on the lawn, so please enjoy that during the spring and early summer. Now, I'm about to pray to God, and if you don't do that, that's okay. Prayer is expansive and not exclusive, just like how I understand God. So as I leave the invocation, you're invited to take the posture that is most comfortable for you. I invite all of us gathered here to take a deep breath, calm your body and mind, and settle yourself. Let us pray. God, wise and loving one, we thank you for bringing us into this meeting today. We thank you for life, family, and community. We thank you for our well-being. We thank you for the awesome responsibility of leading your people in the offices we hold. Bless these commissioners as they do their work today and every day. Give them an attitude of wisdom, love, and justice that with firm purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people in our county. Where they meet resistance to their work for the common good, make a way through such that the health of our community may grow. Give them a sense of the true needs of the people of Cobb County. Help them lead with grace, humility, and confidence. Where there may be confusion, shine the light of reason and give discernment. For our commissioners and citizens, you have bound us all together in a common life. Grant that barriers which divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatred cease. Heal our divisions, that we may live in justice and peace. Help each of us in the midst of our struggles for justice and truth to confront one another without hatred or bitterness, and to work together with mutual patience and respect. Protect these commissioners, mind, body, heart, and soul, that they are free to do their work and enjoy their lives. Give them rest when they need it, joy, and peace. For the agenda at hand today and issues to come, give these commissioners wisdom and discernment, and bless other local leaders, elected and appointed officials, our state and nation as we seek life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness together. Amen.
Thank you so much, Reverend Abrams. Would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. I think we are ready to get started with our agenda for today, and so I will turn it over to John to go over our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning. Today's hearing will be conducted following process and procedure. Each case will be called in your order. We ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the record. Then after the counting of the applicant, we're going to ask if anyone here is opposed to that case. We would also ask that the people opposed please stand up and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. After recognizing the applicant and any opposition, both parties will be asked to come forward to be sworn in so they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's very, very important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person wishing to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. If they have a discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are three cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice, and these cases will not be heard. First case is resounding case Z1 of 2022, Polte Home Company. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice. Next case is resounding case Z13 of 2022, Dunamis Development LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. And the last case withdrawn without prejudice is SLEP3 of 2022, Dunamis Development. These cases will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been either held or continued by the planning commissioner staff, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z48 of 2021, Ray Murphy. This case was held by the planning commission until the May 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z48 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z83 of 2021, Sam Burke. This case was continued by the staff until the May 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z83 of 2021 will not be heard today. SLEP3 of 2021, Ray Murphy. This case was held by the planning commission until the May 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP3 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z19 of 2022, New Buddies LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z20 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z21 of 2022, Francisco Padilla. This case was continued by the staff until the May 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z21 of 2022 will not be heard today. And finally, SLEP5 of 2022, Parallel Towers III LLC, AKA Parallel Infrastructure LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP5 of 2022 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn your volume on mute as the ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they made a campaign contribution within the last two years exceeding $250 more to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table on the back of this room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Chairman and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Okay. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for April 5th, 2022. First resounding case on consent is resounding case Z5, Weeping Schneider, America 101 LLC. Request rezoning from R20 to RD for a duplex in Land Lot 85 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Old Noonday Schoolhouse Road, west of Canton Road. The planning commission recommends approval to RD subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on November 19th, 2021 with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Number two, existing structure to be used as a duplex only. Number three, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number four, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number five, fire department comments and recommendations. And number six, water and sewer comments and recommendations. Is there anyone here today opposed to rezoning case Z5?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z22 of 2022, First Property Asset Managers LLC. Request rezoning from LRC to R20 for a single-family residence in Land Lot 85 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Old Noonday Schoolhouse Road, west of Canton Road. The planning commission recommends deletion to RD subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on February 3rd, 2022 with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Number two, existing structure to be used for a duplex or single-family use only. Number three, fire department comments and recommendations. Number four, stormwater management comments and recommendations. Number five, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. And number six, water and sewer comments and recommendations. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z22?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP7, Gregory D. Bowen. Request a temporary land use permit to allow temporary occupancy of an RV in Land Lot 146 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Mars Hill Church Road, south of Witt Station Run. Staff recommends approval for 12 months, subject to, number one, if the building permit expires due to lack of inspections, the approval will be revoked. Is the applicant present?
I think he's present.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP7?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman and Board.
Thank you so much. We have reviewed the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? I'll call the question. Okay, the consent agenda is passed by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, all those folks that were on consent, you're free to leave. Just come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. All right, moving into the continued or held case part of the agenda. Resoning case Z7 of 2022, KM Homes. Request rezoning from R20 to FST for a townhome community in Land Lot 22 of the 20th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Wade Green Road, north of Wooton Lake Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z7? So we got two. Let the record show there's two people here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning. I almost said good evening. I had a case last night and then get up and come here, so kind of remember what time of day it is. Good evening, or good morning. For the record, my name is Parks, Hough, Law Firm, Samzlaken Huff, and I represent KM Homes in relation to this rezoning application before you. To begin with, let me give you the location of the property. It's a triangular shape of property. It's right across from Pittner Elementary School, just north and contiguous to a public shopping center. If you follow Wade Green Road to the south, you get to the interstate. So you can see this is a transition property as you transition from the intensity towards the interstate and lower-density residential behind us into the north. If you look at the surrounding zonings, obviously the school is owned R20, but it is an institutional use in the zoning category, should be O and I or something along those lines if you look at the actual use. You have neighborhood shopping to the south, and then behind us is an R15. And then also to the south and adjacent to the shopping centers, an RA4 and PD developed it at much smaller lot sizes than the R15 to the north. The land use plan is very important to consider here in that you have this property designated as medium-density residential, and that was not just an accident, it's intentional. It's creating the transition between the intensity. That's what your land use plan anticipates. And also it works in this situation because you have a triangular odd-shaped piece of property, and MDR actually worked better on development in a odd-shaped piece of property than a traditional zoning category, low-density residential. And you can see, again, the blue across the street recognizing the intensity of the elementary school, and the red, we're directly against a, not just a neighborhood activity center, but a community activity center that merges with the interstate. Topography is important to consider here. You can see that our property has a draw in the middle of the property, so it starts up high where we're on grade at Wade Green, then it drops down lower, and then it comes back high again adjacent to the adjacent neighborhood. So you can see how that grade works on the property. What my client, KM Homes, has come up with is a design that takes all these elements together, takes the triangular shape of the property, takes the topography, and came up with a land use plan that makes a lot of sense. It has townhomes facing Wade Green Road within the MDR category, and then it takes advantage of the fall of the property by having two stories facing Wade Green Road and three stories in the back with parking from behind. So this will have a nice presentation along Wade Green Road, where you have the fronts of the homes facing Wade Green Road. You have the landscaping done facing Wade Green Road. Then you have the parking in the back. And so for the way this creates a transition for the neighborhood behind us is, you basically are going to have a sound barrier of the traffic on Wade Green Road, and you will have a significant amount of greenery and topography that will remain because the topographical drop that we showed before will be picked up by this elevation change with our homes to facing frame back. So this is a thoughtful design that looked at the land use plan, that looked at the topography, looked at the surrounding uses, and came up with a 37-home community that will provide housing that is not currently provided in the area and that is desperately needed in this county. Again, this is an aerial that shows you the trees that are in the back of that triangle in the topographical change that goes further back that would not be touched with this development. The only thing we're going to be doing is putting in the alley that goes behind the homes, it services the garages that will face backwards, and then put in a detention pond, and we will be able to handle the grade with the grade change with the homes. So in terms of how it lives, these will be townhomes that will look like this facing the road. They're mid to upper threes. They will really be in the fours more than likely when they're out of the ground, and they will look very attractive along the road. The other element to consider is the fact that these will have strict homeowners associations, all lawn maintenance and everything will be cared for. Again, so if you're adjacent residents, you will have a neighbor that has, you know, lawn, common lawn maintenance quietly done during the week, not on the weekends, and you'll have, you know, no dogs and no fences and a big buffer. The neighbors have had some questions and concerns, so they have to fight rezoning. And one thing I'd like to say is, you know, why do we use antagonistic terms like "fight"? I mean, we need to do a better job with our dialogue, and they have circulated petition that we need to fight this rezoning. What we're fighting is housing for people. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about zoning, is housing for people. We don't need to fight housing for people. There is, this is the reason to sign the petition. Number one, there is no FST zoning anywhere in the area. Well, that's a reason to support the zoning, because housing types of different types are needed in a community to have a vibrancy. I talked to someone that lived in the neighborhood behind me, behind this today, did not want to call him out by name, but they used to live there and live there with their kids, and in 2020, they sold and relocated to a condominium to downsize. Their home was backfilled with family with kids. That's the type of housing diversity that we need to provide different housing types. This feasible townhome is a housing type that is needed in the area, does not create a solution for new, for affordable housing. I did not say this was going to be affordable housing, but this is going to be more affordable to someone who might be living in an apartment paying exorbitant rent right now. This will be more affordable than most of the new single-family detached housing. And when you look, Mr. Beloine, you really keyed in on something a while ago. Our average household size is 2.5, so we're building homes for people that live in three, four, and five-person households, but in reality, most of our people live in one- and two-person households. So it does provide an opportunity for different housing, and it has an affordable component. It may not be affordable, but it is more affordable. Too high, too dense. This is close to the interstate. It's MDR and your land use plan. You're on an arterial road with 22,000 cars a day. Why do we have 22,000 cars a day? Because this is transportation from Cherokee County to Cobb County. If we provided more housing in Cobb County, probably less traffic on Wade Green Road, disruptive to Pittner Elementary and businesses on Wade Green Village. I've talked to the Publix manager, and he said he happens to rent in the area, and he was very excited about this proposal, not only for him, but for other people that work in the Wade Green Village Shopping Center. Safety issues, those are all addressed by staff, and it will contribute to the neighborhood. One thing I wanted to point out, and for those who represent South Cobb, this should come as a very big shock to you, schools, 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 this is the school data. Pittner Elementary School, 776 enrollment, 962 is the capacity. It has capacity for 186 students. Every school in this district has capacity. In 2016, Pittner Elementary had 974 students. We're not only talking about capacity, we're talking about declining school enrollment. This should come as a very big surprise to you who live in South Cobb, and you're used to the school board standing up and saying, "deny this because we have trouble providing capacity." Well, why aren't they here standing up saying, "why don't you support this because we have capacity"? Your staff went through a very detailed analysis, and I'm not going to read through it all, but they covered, and I hope you had a chance, they covered the issues that I covered about why this fits in with the land use plan. This is the R15 that I was told, well, you know, behind us R15, why can't you do an R15? So I was asked, can you do an R15 plan? So I had my client do an R15 plan. We do not agree to this R15 plan. It would be a crying shame to develop this property as R15, given its shape and topography. You can see, it's kind of hard to tell the lines, but you can see every square inch of this property is going to be flat, because you know every new development that, homes are built on slabs typically, we're able to, with the townhomes, use the grade, but these would most likely be graded out as flat, so the dip would be filled in, and you would bridge that, and you would have all those trees that we were showing in the back corner would all be gone. And there is no buffer between R15, and we can provide a buffer. And so the other issue that has been raised is traffic. We have a traffic memo for that shows that actually townhomes, even at more units, create less traffic per, and the key to look at here is the AM and PM peak. That's where your most concern is, AM and PM peak. And actually, you can have more townhomes because, yes, they're smaller household sizes, so they have less traffic. So developing it as typical single-family detached actually has a bigger impact on traffic. We've agreed to all the staff recommendations and DOT recommendations, and DOT should not be a question or a concern about this case. Your staff went through all this and said, "we recommend approval." We have a plan, medium-density residential. It's a transition category between more intensive uses. Housing with open space and high-quality design should be encouraged development in this area. We have a plan.
You're at time.
And I asked you to follow your plan and follow your staff recommendations. If you do not, I asked you to go through those elements and look at your staff and say, "where do you disagree with your staff"? You can't just say deny it. You have to tell me where you disagree with the staff, where they're wrong. Thank you.
Now we'll hear from the opposition, please.
My little clicker, please, sir. What's it, right there? Fantastic. Good morning. My name is Andy Johnston, and the, does that work?
It's the right button.
The right button, sorry. I'm here to speak to you this morning to represent this area of Cobb County. Now, Mr. Huff did a really good job today reading our petition to you, so that's going to make things a whole lot quicker here. In this particular situation, need to take a little bit broader perspective of this. This is not just this little pocket near that shopping center in Pittner Elementary. This is in the edge of a very large section of R20 zoning that extends from Baker Road at the west all the way over to Bell's Ferry Road on the east, goes from the edge of the shopping center all the way up to the county line. Now, this is all R20 zoning, all single-family homes. Anytime, anyplace in Cobb County where there is a large concentration of R20 homes, the situation is exactly the same as what we're talking about this morning. Now, we turned in a set of petitions this morning to you that Mr. Huff talked about with 841 names that were gathered in one month alone. So this is a very, very hot-button issue for this. Now, you heard about it in generalities just a moment ago. Let's look at it in particular, because there's some questions here. As you see up on the screen, the little triangle is the piece of property we're talking about. And according to their proposal, this has a density of 4.4 units per acre. 100 yards away, on the other side of the shopping center, is another townhouse development from Beazer that you folks approved, and it has an R5 zoning. If they're at 4.4 units per acre, why are they looking for FST? Why aren't they not RA4? It's the logical and appropriate zoning for this. Why would they want double the amount of units that is required for their property? That's what we need to look at specifically. Now, you saw this plan, and you saw the aerial pictures. This is a conceptual plan. After five months, you're still looking at a concept. This isn't real. This isn't a preliminary site plan. This isn't what they're going to build. This is what they're kind of sort of maybe thinking about building. If you look at this plan, it's very blank. It's like face with no eyebrows. It's based on a 1981 survey. The data is 41 years old. Out of that survey, the only information they've included are the boundaries- We've agreed to all the staff recommendations and DOT recommendations, and DOT should not be a question or a concern about this case. Your staff went through all this and said, we recommend approval. We have a plan, medium-dense residential. It's a transition category between more intensive uses. Housing with open space and high-quality design should be encouraged development in this area. We have a plan.
You're at time.
And I asked you to follow your plan and follow your staff recommendations. If you do not, I asked you go through those elements and look at your staff and say, where do you disagree with your staff? You can't just say deny it. You have to tell me where you disagree with the staff, where they're wrong.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Now, we'll hear from the opposition, please.
My little clicker, please, sir. What's it, right there? Fantastic. Good morning. My name is Andy Johnston, and let me, does that work?
It's the right button.
The right button, sorry. I'm here to speak to you this morning to represent this area of Cobb County. Now, Mr. Huff did a really good job today reading our petition to you, so that's going to make things a whole lot quicker here. In this particular situation, need to take a little bit broader perspective of this. This is not just this little pocket near that shopping center in Pittner Elementary. This is in the edge of a very large section of R-20 zoning that extends from Baker Road at the west all the way over to Bell's Ferry Road on the east, goes from the edge of the shopping center all the way up to the county line. Now, this is all R-20 zoning, all single-family homes. Anytime, anyplace in Cobb County where there is a large concentration of R-20 homes, the situation is exactly the same as what we're talking about this morning. Now, we turned in a set of petitions this morning to you that Mr. Huff talked about with 841 names that were gathered in one month alone. So this is a very, very hot-button issue for this. Now, you heard about it in generalities just a moment ago. Let's look at it in particular, because there's some questions here. As you see up on the screen, the little triangle is the piece of property we're talking about. And according to their proposal, this has a density of 4.4 units per acre. A hundred yards away, on the other side of the shopping center, is another townhouse development from Beazer that you folks approved, and it has an R-5 zoning. If they're at 4.4 units per acre, why are they looking for FST? Why aren't they not RA-4? It's the logical and appropriate zoning for this. Why would they want double the amount of units that is required for their property? That's what we need to look at specifically. Now, you saw this plan, and you saw the aerial pictures. This is a conceptual plan. After five months, you're still looking at a concept. This isn't real. This isn't a preliminary site plan. This isn't what they're going to build. This is what they're kind of sort of maybe thinking about building. If you look at this plan, it's very blank. It's like face with no eyebrows. It's based on a 1981 survey. The data is 41 years old. Out of that survey, the only information they've included are the boundary lines, some map coordinates, and the location of one stream. There are no dimensions on this plan. There are no measurements on this plan. Mr. Belloin, if you wanted to know the length of that southern property line, you couldn't do it. There's no measurements on it. There's no details here. There's no existing water lines, sewer lines, water sewer connections. Is there an easement on this property? They just say detention area. Well, what's the details on that detention area? We simply don't know this. There's a county right-of-way. It's not labeled. How big is it? There's a setback. It's not labeled. How big is it? And most tellingly, and he touched on it a moment ago, is the elevation and the typography. If you look at this, it appears like the property is flat, which it isn't. The south side, which is to the right of your screen, is higher than the left side. And as he has explained, there is a huge typographic, topographic, there we go, issue on this. I know you guys are used to looking at the maps where the lines are closer together. That means the slope is more severe. In this situation, there is only a small area of flat land. Now, this is right next to Chase Bank. At this point, the ravine is 15 feet deep. If you get down to that southeastern corner, it's a 35-foot difference between street level and the bottom of that ravine. This is not a small ravine. This is a hole. Up at the north end, there's a 15-foot difference between Wade Green Road and this area. Now, it's very nice to show you that beautiful rendering, but the reality is, of this 8.4 acres, there are only about two acres that are actually buildable land without extensive grading, extensive excavation, and fill. This lets you know why they're going after FST. To make it simple, let's just assume three acres. At RA-5, they could build 15 townhouses. At FST, they can build 30 townhouses. They've acknowledged they've got a problem with this property going in. What they haven't told you is the extent of this, and any sort of plan they have for doing this. You can't fill this property without giant concrete retention walls. The people at Chase Bank will have a huge retention wall next to them that will possibly run that entire length down towards the shopping center. They're not particularly thrilled about that. We talked about the school. What they didn't mention is, they plan to put the entrance to the townhouse directly across from the entrance to Pittner Elementary School. This is a very bad idea that was brought up and objected to at our very, very first meeting back in January. This is a very congested area. The school zone at Pittner is a half a mile long. And every day in the morning and in the afternoon, it's a 25 mile an hour zone, traffic packs up. It's very difficult to get there. The county put in a crossover in front of the school to allow the parents to pull out and turn left on the Wade Green Road. Their intention is to use the same crossover and have their cars go in the other direction and try to turn to go south towards the interstate. This is only going to create more problems. The issue is not adding 100 cars to 22,000 cars a day. Excuse me. It's adding 100 cars at this particular point. The DOT came back with a plan last week. Now, this was developed just in conjunction with KM Homes. No one else was involved in it. Their plan proposes to essentially completely tear out and rework the entrance at Pittner Elementary School. They're going to change the crosswalks, they're going to change the islands, they're going to raise everything to make it higher, they're going to tear out a section of the median there. The purpose is to align the Pittner entrance with the builder's entrance. If you look at this plan, what's the biggest thing you notice? There's absolutely no construction or change at all to the builder's side of the road. Part of our frustration here is this is not the right place to put the entrance. It's just the one that the builder deems as convenient. About 60 feet down the road, if you look at their plan, is the middle of their subdivision. Based on their design, the logical place is to put it there. It creates no traffic issues, and because of the larger right-of-way, you can put a deceleration lane there that is not up at where they propose to have their entrance. This is an obvious plan, but has not been even considered at all. Another serious issue here is the rain-water management. This shows the plot of the rain-water management through these areas. Their solution is to dump all the water from this development, this project, into the systems at Parkwood Commons and Chestnut Hill. This is going to be a very, very extensive project. It's going to have lots of issues. It's going to take months to analyze and evaluate to take it through here. In the process of doing this, this is going to require changes and excavation through as many as 40 homes to get it from here to Chestnut Hill. Again, this is a major issue, and it's not really considered here. And frankly, it's not our neighborhood and the other neighborhoods' responsibility to make KM Homes project buildable. Let me sum it up this way. In this area, there are about 3,000 homes. Average home value, $340,000. That's $1,200 million of investment by the people who are already there. The homeowners, the citizens, the voters, they've already invested this huge amount of money. Now, we recognize that we need development here. We want people to come in. It's important, but this is not the kind of project that we need. In our, one more thought. In our January meeting, KM Homes was there, they presented, and people were asking questions. The question was asked, what benefit does this rezoning and this project have for the neighborhoods and people in this area? They did not have an answer to that question. We want development, but this is not the kind of project we need. So we respectfully request that you recommend denial of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. All right. Since we are in District 3, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dance to lead us in discussion.
Thank you. If Amy could come forward, please.
Could you address the comments that have been made here as to the recommendations of DOT relative to this property and the recommendations relative to the intersection?
Are you speaking of the plan that they showed, the DOT's comments? So the citizens contacted DOT and said that they were concerned about the traffic coming out of the subdivision, interacting with the school traffic. So I went to our traffic operations department, who has a specific school kind of interface, and they have done observations at this school this year and talked to them about, was there anything design-wise, other than paint and signage, which we were given by the citizens was not acceptable? Was there anything that could be done here that would address the idea of the possibility of the traffic interacting in a negative fashion? So the design that was shown has been implemented successfully over at South Cobb Elementary School. It basically moves the island over to allow it to protect the right-in movement so that traffic could not go straight through from across the street. And it widens out the intersection, basically so buses can still make that turn once the island is moved. It's not moved for the development side of the traffic. It's moved for the buses. Because once you move the island over and the right turns and left turns happen, basically they can't swing as wide in one direction, they need more room. This was then given to the developer, asked if they were willing to do these improvements, to fund them, so they would not be funded by the county, they would be done by the developers part of doing their entrance, as part of plan review. And they considered it and said that they were willing to, which is why it's included in your packet, so that you could see what it is that they have at least tentatively agreed to do if, to address the concerns about school traffic.
Okay. And is school traffic the only traffic concern that the department has?
So as they showed with the trip generation memorandum, the trips expected from this development are relatively low. So, you know, is there congestion on Wade Green? Yes. Is there congestion from the school? Yes. I mean, they showed a picture of it. We would actually anticipate that impacts the residents of this new development more than the residents of new development are going to impact the school. You know, if Wade Green was not so wide, we would actually have concerns that people might park along the new residential roadway in order to walk their kids over to avoid that queue, things of that nature, things we have seen at other schools. But because Wade Green is why we don't really anticipate that here, but, you know, the people that live in that townhome are going to have to deal with that 15 to 30 minutes of congestion every morning that is associated with the school right across the street. Now, could they move the entrance? They could. They do have about 1,200 feet of frontage, so they have enough room to shift it up and down. It will then become a right-in, right-out situation with U-turns required at the next available U-turn location. So that U-turning traffic will end up in the school traffic, still impacting it in that fashion.
Are there safety concerns at the intersection as proposed?
As proposed, no. I mean, obviously, we're still dealing with a concept-level sketch and ideas. They'll have to confirm that site distance is acceptable. We'll have to confirm that bus-turning templates and their turning templates for vehicles can make all the movements. This was a conceptual-level plan, just to make sure they agreed to do these additional improvements to address the concerns about the school traffic, which were not DOT concerns, but they are addressing the citizen concerns about school traffic.
Okay. Anyone else on the?
Just a general comment. You just alluded to it. At what point typically are all those details confirmed?
In plan review.
Okay. Thank you.
One follow-up. Could you repeat the, you mentioned the school where this type of plan has been successful before in another part of Cobb. Can you repeat that school? I dismissed it.
I believe it is South Cobb Elementary. It might be East Cobb Elementary. It's in my email. There's actually an aerial picture in the email that shows that school. That school's design is a little bit different because they had an existing very wide entrance with a divider in between their entering and exiting lane for the residents that are across the street. And so, and they don't have a left turn shown, like a left turn lane, but I confirmed that those details are still fine with traffic operations. They don't impact the design that's protecting the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could have Mr. Huff come forward. Could you address the statement that what you have submitted is not site plan-specific? Is the placement of those homes site plan-specific? And are there dimensions on the current plan? And I understand that picture that's being shown right now is not...
Yeah, I mean, we submitted a site, I'm not sure whether I've loaded the technical site plan on here, but we submitted a site plan that meets with the, and that's overlaid on this aerial, that meets the county standards on filing a rezoning application and meets all those things. You know, in terms of site plan-specific, this plan, as Mr. Hughes said, has not been fully planned, reviewed until it goes through the plan review process. You're going to have size of detention pond determined to address the stormwater issues. You're going to have desalation lanes and setbacks and all that. So it's not site plan-specific because it's not fully engineered, and no plan before you is fully engineered at this stage. So it meets all the county requirements in terms of that.
So I was present at a community meeting, and you were present at the same community meeting earlier in the year, and I heard a discussion about that you and your client were open to having discussions with the folks about the density and working out a plan that was amenable to the community. I also heard it from the other side, that they were amenable to sitting down and having, you know, productive discussions. Has that occurred?
I've asked, I mean, I've asked, I mean, our plan is 25% impervious, 25% impervious. I agree with most of what the opposition said. If this was developed R-15, you're going to flatten this piece of property, significant amount of grading. There's a better way to develop the property, and we will always engage with the community. And I asked, I begged, can we sit down and have a discussion? And I was told, unless you agree to the R-15 plan, there's no discussion. And I don't find that acceptable, and we can't agree to it. And I do want to point out, too, that if it's zoned R-15, Amy Diaz made it very clear in her statement, that the median changes are needed for the school. There's two buckets when you talk about developer assistance in infrastructure. You've got system improvements, and you have project improvements. A developer's responsible for project improvements. That's improvements on the infrastructure that relate to their project. But when it's a system improvement, which is what Ms. Diaz said, it is not the responsibility of developer. We would be willing to do that system improvement that is for the school system and for their traffic, if we can have a zoning that is consistent with a land use plan. We can do that, but we cannot make that system improvement as part of an R-15 zoning.
Okay. So I will comment that my perception is that this is a very, and I'm using a non-technical term, crowded-looking plan, and that there was an interest in folks in having a plan that might have some air in it and might have some beauty in it, and it seems like it would be a worthwhile endeavor to engage in the community on those matters, and I will ask them about that in just a minute. But is your client willing to facilitate that kind of discussion? Because I know the community has spent money and put something together at the local school.
At that meeting, I was hopeful that there were certainly, especially like the 10 homeowners behind us, I mean, where are their voices? I mean, those 10 homeowners would be significantly impacted if this was zoned R-15. I was hopeful at that meeting that we could have some people rise to the top and sit down and have a discussion, not fight, as in their petition says. I mean, that's what government is, and we are willing to be participant in that.
Are you willing to help facilitate that, then?
Yes.
Okay. And I mean, obviously, it seems to me, and I'm commenting to the citizen group right now, that, you know, a smaller group of people than a roomful of people is going to be much more productive in terms of trying to say that there's something between R-15 and 37 homes that might be acceptable, but that there's work to be done to get there, so.
I'm always willing to work with the community.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Huff?
Okay. Great. Thank you. Mr. Huff, one quick question. In terms of the site plan work done to date, I know in the package, there is a zero, and this is a question I'll also follow up with stormwater on, in terms of any kind of floodplains or wetland allocations. Do you, in terms of some of the preliminary analysis, have a sense or anticipate, given the ravine, kind of how much acreage may be potentially lost for dedication of stormwater management use? I'm just trying to think about kind of how that 8.4 nets out. I know that's a site plan question and determination, but would love if you have any guidance preliminarily on how to think about that.
This property does not have any floodplain, any wetlands on it. That's been already determined by my client and his engineer. We've also had Frank Gibson, who is the most, I mean, he's the guy that you go to on drainage and state water issues, and he's already evaluated and determined there's not state waters on this property. This is a drainage draw that is, picks up the drainage. And the impact of this property, it's a public shopping center, detention pond is directly adjacent to us and releases on this property. So that's what we have, is detention from the public shopping center running through the property, using that grade. He's determined it is not state water. So there's no environmental issues related. So there's no environmental issues related to that. We've already made those determinations.
Please, Chairman Bala.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I heard, unless I misheard, I thought I heard the opposition speak in terms of what the relative differences would be between this plan and an RA4 plan. Have you or your client looked at all of an RA4 plan?
We have not. We can certainly evaluate different categories. As you can see, there's RA4, there's RA5, there's a PUD, which is a current category. So there's all these other zonings that are directly adjacent to the public shopping center within this area, and we'll be glad to look at those.
And do you think an RA4 plan could be substantially accomplished and still leave a significant buffer in the rear to the...
My goal has always been to be able to use the grade as, it's a challenge, as a benefit.
Right.
If we can do that with an RA4, we'd be glad to do it. I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, but I think if we can have some meaningful discussions with the neighbors, I won't even say opposition, with the people concerned, then we can evaluate these concerns. Because if you, once you detach, then you have spread out that development. Again, we're 25% impervious. If you spread it out, you get more. But there may be pluses and minuses in that. We'll be glad to look at it.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back to Commissioner Dent.
Okay, and if I could have, thank you very much, if I could have Mr. Johnston come forward.
Hi.
So Mr. Huff has explained that these community, follow-up community activities had not occurred, correct?
I have had one telephone call with Mr. Huff, which was on March 10th. There's been no attempt to contact us, no attempt to have any sort of discussion or dialogue.
Okay.
We're not hard to find.
All right. So let's just tone that down a little bit, okay?
I'm sorry.
Because what we're talking about is finding out if there is room for collaboration and having meaningful discussions. And so, I mean, I think his point is taken about, let's not fight, let's come to the table and have meaningful discussions. I also think his point is well-taken of, you know, there should be an involvement of people that are affected and that are adjoining neighbors. Are those individuals who, because I think I heard one or two at the community meeting that sounded like they were in the neighborhood, so to speak, more directly. Are there folks like that that can be brought into a group to have discussions?
We can get whatever people are the right people for this. The people whose property are directly adjacent to this, that's fine. They have no problem at all. We can have all those people together. We would have been happy to have talked about this prior to the proposal being put together and delivered back on December 2nd. We are not in any way opposed to development and growth and new people coming into this area.
Right, I heard you say that.
You know, we just want it done in the right way.
Right. So it seems to me like there's room for people to get together and actually have that kind of dialogue and actually see what's the right zoning, what are the right numbers. And if that's something that is, and I mean, are you the group's representative?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that something that you can help facilitate with Mr. Huff?
Absolutely.
And I would suggest that it not be a crowded room, that there be a designated number of individuals who are interested with particular interests that can be addressed at the table.
Sure.
Can that be facilitated?
Yes, it can.
Okay. All right. And, I mean, so what I've heard is both sides saying there's room for compromise, and there's room to develop something that is good for the area. Is that correct from your perspective?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. Because I did hear folks saying, we know there is going to be development, let's work together for it. Is that fair?
That's right.
Okay. Is there anything else that you've heard at this hearing that you think should be addressed?
I don't think it's really the time and place for us to go into he said, we said type things.
Right, yeah, I don't want to do that.
I think in this particular situation, if there had been some discussion upfront, if this, this is, it seems like the objective is to put 37 townhouses on that piece of property. And as you pointed out, it fills it from one side to the other. It's a really full design, even in the fact that they're going to have to fill that south end, that southeast west, excuse me, southwest corner extensively to allow for those last 10 or so townhomes. It's just more townhomes than can appropriately fit on this property. If there was a better plan that made it more appropriate for the property, whether it's townhouses or single-family houses, we're open to all that. We're not saying we don't want anything built there, but it's got to fit.
Okay, so what I'm going to recommend is that there be a good faith endeavor on both parts, both sides, to come to the table and actually have a discussion. I do not believe that this density is what we're aiming for in this area, but does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Johnston?
Any questions? No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else on the board have questions for any other members of staff?
I just had a question for Carl Carver, Stormwater.
Carl Carver, Cobb County, Stormwater.
Hi.
Good morning, Carl.
Good morning.
I just wanted to see if you could address, or maybe speak to Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston's concern and comment around how the site plan as shown might drain into, I think it was in, you know, was it Chestnut? Could you offer some comments on, you know, if there have been any studies or analysis around that? I know, again, some of this is more within the site plan review stage, but we welcome any kind of reaction to that comment or thoughts on that.
In my comments and at this time of site plan review, they'll have to provide documentation of the existing sediment in Parkwood Commons Lake, which is much sooner than it gets to Chestnut. And because Parkwood Commons Lake is upstream of the Chestnut, we didn't require anything at the Chestnut Lake. But we are requiring pre-development sediment studies and stream documentation of the existing stream between this site and the Parkwood Commons Lake as a part of the plan review.
Thank you. And then the only other question would be, again, this is more of a hypothetical, if this were a R-15 subdivision, is there any sense that you might have at a high level of different, you know, kind of requirements in terms of the stormwater management or detention needs for the site versus what's being proposed here?
Not too much difference. With the townhome development, they'll have to size their stormwater management pond based on the maximum or some documentation of what their impervious coverage are. By zoning, they're allowed up to 40%, but he stated that they're at 25%. So somewhere in between that probably is what the design needs to be for the stormwater management pond. Also, with the current regulations, they have to provide runoff reduction. So that's part of determining that volume during plan review would be critical, but it's still going to be designed to release at existing rates, plus the stormwater that's coming from the public shopping center.
Great, thank you, Carl.
Any other questions? Commissioner? All right, I'll turn it back to Commissioner Dent.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to just make a few comments. I have made some throughout, but I hear there's, first of all, I want to do what the pastor said and draw a breath. And I think that's what the parties here need to do, is draw a breath, and let's not cast stones, and let's just sit down and really get about the business of creating, if it can be created, a development that's good for the community and good for that development and good for that property. I appreciate both sides indicating that there are opportunities here to sit down. I would suggest that the parties come together and create a forum in which they can have these discussions. I will say that I do not believe that the density that's proposed is the density that would be approved, and that there need to be concessions made. And I think, obviously, with the right perspectives, there's opportunity here for these parties to work to create something rather than us working to create something from our end. I would like to suggest that at those meetings, it be more than a dogmatic approach on the developer's side, that we don't have to present more than this, and that we might actually be able to come up, and y'all might be able to come forward and give us a plan, show us a plan, that is good and has the support of the community. On the other side, I hope that we're not just being dogmatic and saying we don't want anything in our community, but we want to work together to actually create something that's good. I think I hear that here, and I think we just need to let y'all have the opportunity to do that. So with that said, my motion would be that we would hold this case and strongly encourage the parties to get together and have discussion and to bring something forward to our board that we can actually look at and consider, and that would be good for all concerned. I would hold it for one meeting. If there's a need for an extension of time, you want to speak to that?
I'd just like to state publicly, I mean, our hope is to be back before you next month, but I don't want to create unrealistic expectations. I mean, it's spring break this week, you know, it's going to take a little while to get a meeting set, and if we have some site plan design, we hope to be back before you, but I don't want everybody to be disappointed if we ask it to be held another month to be able to further those dialogue. I'd rather have the dialogue than the speed, but I don't want it table two months. At this point, I just wanted to lay that foundation if we ask for it to be tabled again.
I totally agree with that, so it would be held for one month, and then the parties, if they need additional time, can let us know.
We have a motion on the table. Second. Second by Commissioner Hughes. I'll call, any discussion? No, let's call the question. Okay. That motion passes, we have a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, the next case is rezoning case Z16. Carl Courtmeyer requests a rezoning from ONI to R-15 for a single-family residence in Landlaw 33 and 34, the 17th district. The property is located on the north side of Clay Road, west of Floyd Road. Is the applicant present? The director of the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z16?
Yes, we have one.
The director, there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward. We sworn in.
Yes, sir. Just stick your name for the record and go for it.
My name's Keith Courtmeyer. My father, Carl Courtmeyer, is the owner, and I'm representing him. I apologize about being nervous. We're taking a, what we'd like to do is take a residential house that was built in the 50s, a couple decades ago, it seems like, was converted to a daycare facility in its use, but not in its look, and we'd like to convert it back to its original use as a residential property. I have conceptual drawings now and scope of work. I have little packets for you, if you'd like to look through that. Unfortunately, I don't have it digital right now, but I can get that to you digitally.
Thank you.
I tried to address the earlier concerns that I had with staff, just to get more ideas about what we're planning on doing and landscaping.
Is there, does he have one that we can, that we can use for the overhead?
Apologize. If y'all look through that, this is the current state of the house. Yeah, sorry.
He's going to be able to share some of yours, over the overhead. Give us one second.
We're not going to expand the footprint at all. We are going to update the inside and outside. This is the social drawing, survey, landscape plan, and scope of work. I don't know, I apologize. We've also had a surveyor, the original surveyor, come and do an impervious surface calculation to make sure we're under the requirement 32%. And that's a, there's a copy in that package there for you. We're going to improve the property. We're going to basically touch everything on the outside and the inside without expanding, just updating surfaces, modernizing. I'd be happy to go through any of that, any questions that you have. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thanks, we would have questions at the end, but no, you still have plenty of time, if there's anything else you want to share for you.
The information that's in that packet, that we'd like to make it a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, single-family residence. That's, the paper will express the information better than I can, unless I'm asked a question.
Doing a great job.
Is that it?
If you're fine.
Anything?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate you. Of course, well, I'll have an opportunity to answer any opposition.
We'll call you back up at the end in the discussion. We hear from the opposition at this time.
Good morning. I'm Robin Meyer with the Mappleton Improvement Coalition, and we're very happy to see this application for this property, and very happy this morning to see the drawing for the exterior and the sketch of the landscaping. We would request that you approve this application with some stipulations or with some conditions. There's a sign in the front yard near the street that's leftover from the daycare, and we would ask that that be removed, that you ask that, require that that be removed. Clearly, I think there's going to be some repainting on the exterior, at least that was Mr. Courtmeyer's plan when I spoke with him by phone. And we would ask that the repainting, the removal of the sign, and the approval of that landscape drawing and the location of the parking area all be set in stone with
Thank you. This is in District 4. I will turn it over to Commissioner Hughes to lead our discussion.
Thank you, Chairman Ballen. If I can have the applicant come back in.
Good morning, Mr. Cortmeyer, and thank you for the documents that you provided.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. I wonder though if you could take a few minutes. One of the handouts that you provided was a scope of work.
Yes.
For exterior, the front of the house, backyard and the interior. Could you kind of hit the highlights on what your plans are?
Yes.
As it relates to the scope of work and that and then also what the timing or schedule is for doing that, this work as well?
I'd love to be...
Hold on. Can we put that, can we put that scope of work up for the benefit of Ms. Meyer?
I'll read it from the screen, so bear with me. The timeframe would be three to six months as far as completed construction and actually having a potential residence. I think the main points of concern are we're in agreement to remove the sign. The parking, you can see in the both surveys, that we'd like to have basically the original parking and driveway, but to put edging on it, to clean it, make it very clear where you're supposed to park. We'd like to have two parking spaces, or available parking spaces in the front of the house and two parking spaces in the back of the house to get them off the street. There'll be a new sidewalk under the front door. I think another major thing is when they built the daycare, I'm assuming they had to add an extra door to the front of the house. We're going to take that away. It'll look like a normal residential house with one main entrance. And there's a, there's a window that doesn't look continuous with the rest of the house and we'll be replacing that with a, an original window. Fortunately, we have that same window on the backside of the house that will be able to make the front look continuous and as well as the siding. We're going to put new siding on the house because the siding currently is broken with two different materials, kind of like they added a side to it. So we're going to make the front of the house look like a traditional residential house.
Okay. There are a couple of existing accessory buildings in the back. I think there's a...
Yes, sir. There's two sheds.
Back there.
We plan...
One's framed, so if you could share what the plans are for that?
Yes, we plan on the wooden shed. We plan to paint it, same color scheme as the house. The metal, smaller shed, we are going to remove.
Okay. And then you just mentioned two parking spaces in the front, so there won't be a garage, there won't be...
No, sir.
Enclosed garage, but then you will also provide two additional spaces.
Correct.
In the backside, so there'll be a driveway.
There is an existing drive on the side.
To get to the concrete path that's showing in the back?
Yes.
Okay. So have you, you've seen the letter from the Mableton Improvement Coalition?
Yes, I have.
And are you, do you have a response or any feedback with respect to some of the recommendations that they'd ask us or stipulations they'd ask?
I feel like with the removal of the sign, the presentation of paint colors and a landscaping plan, which is that second survey, I feel like we addressed the main concerns of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. Any more that they have, we're happy to work with them, but removing the shed, trying to get some parking in the back of the house instead of everything up front and landscaping, making the house look traditional, correct. Those were attempts to, to work with them and happy to continue doing that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Are there other questions from any other commissioners? Okay. Turning back to you, Commissioner Hughes.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. I too am excited to see the use from a commercial use potentially restored to a single-family, its original use. As the applicant indicated, it was built in the 50s, I think, based on some information here he has and files, was built in 1958. I know it had been used for a daycare facility and I think returning it back to its original use is consistent with the single-family character that's in the area. Based on that, I would recommend approval of, recommend approval of this request, subject to staff's recommendations regarding residential architecture to be approved by the district commissioner, fire department comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, water and sewer comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, as well as the variance identified by the zoning division comments, and then also incorporate Mableton Improvement Coalition's letter dated May 30th, I'm sorry, March 30th. And that is my motion.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion on this?
Did y'all put that on consent?
I'm open, yes, I'm open to putting this on consent.
Do you want to amend your...
I will amend it to include adding this zoning case to consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you for the amendment. Could your second still stand, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, it does.
Awesome. There's no discussion. Let's call the question. That is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Okay. Next case is rezoning case Z-17, Tyler Chandler Homes LLC, who's requesting a rezoning from RSL and LRO to RSL for a residential senior living, non-support of residential subdivision in land lot 122 of the 20th district. The property is located on the south side of McClure Road and on the west of Acworth D. West Road. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-17?
Here. No.
The record shows no one opposed.
Go for it. Thank you and good morning. Kevin Moore here on behalf of Tyler Chandler Homes, applicant in this rezoning application. This property is just over seven acres. It's located at the intersection of Acworth D. West Road and McClure Road, which is, that intersection is just south of the intersection of Acworth D. West and 41, which is a fairly, as you can imagine, a very large intersection and heavily commercialized intersection. What you're seeing on your screen, you see the property which is highlighted. It's highlighted, it's almost, it's probably 60/40 zoned LRO or low-rise office. About 40% of it, about 60% of it is zoned RSL or residential senior living. We are proposing a zoning application to have the entire tract rezoned to residential senior living pursuant to a new site plan. This property was zoned before the, kind of at the time of the recession, right before it got serious, and it was rezoned as part of a little bit larger tract and additional seven acres that's south of this, and it was rezoned LRO and RSL at that time. However, that adjacent tract is no longer part, is owned by somebody different and is not part of this proposal. So we are looking at taking this existing tract and making it all a single RSL development for a total of only 29 homes at 3.9 units per acre. So it fits very nicely within the RSL requirements as well as being less than the density of the RSL that's already approved for this property. The RSL portion of this property that was approved earlier and rezoned, as I referenced before, that was approved at a maximum density of 4.9 units per acre. So this actually brings that overall density on a per-acre basis, reduces that from what it was approved previously. You can also see to the north on your screen, you start to see the red, that is the commercial as you're approaching Kyle Parkway, U.S. Highway 41. Turning to the site plan.
We have proposed the site plan. Just to reorient you again, Acworth D. West Road is here and McClure Road is here. We have our access proposed for McClure Road. We are proposing this to be a gated community with private streets. You can see the arrangement of the residential senior living homes as well as providing for guest parking. One of the comments from DOT was to change the guest parking to parallel parking and we're happy to do that. It's not shown in this plan, but that's an easy change for us to make. The plan also contains the appropriate buffers against adjoining subdivisions, as you can see from the lack of people here in opposition. This was proposed as a rezoning probably a year ago by a different applicant. At that time, it was withdrawn for reasons unrelated to zoning. A lot of questions were answered then. In addition, there's this particular property intersection has a long history in terms of communities working together to bring together a common idea of how it should be developed and what for, and this meets those expectations completely. And so I think a lot of work was done before me to make this, I think, a much, a far easier application than sometimes we see as it fits within the existing expectations of the community and follows the heels of a prior rezoning that rezoned over half the property to RSL at that time. Also, wanted to show you just two examples that are part of our stipulation letter of Tyler Chandler Homes and the type of RSL and senior living communities that he brings and Tyler Chandler Homes brings to this as examples of the types of homes that fit very well within residential senior living.
We have a stipulation letter that's dated March 30th that contains fairly standard stipulations and conditions that you would expect with this type of development to ensure that it does have some community space, community structures that are a part of the community gathering locations and spaces for the community that provides for the private streets and gates as well as for the quality of the homes being proposed by Tyler Chandler Homes, who is a local home builder and developer and has very successful senior developments here in Cobb County and has done a great job with that. Those stipulations, again, are contained within the March 30th letter. We believe this rezoning application not only meets with the recommendation of approval from your professional staff, but also from our perspective, meets the expectations of the surrounding community very well. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and respectfully request your recommendation of approval of this rezoning application to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll turn this over to Commissioner Ballen to lead the discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I don't have any questions for anyone if anyone here... Actually, I have one, not for the applicant, but just for Carl Carver, but if anyone has one for the applicant, I'm happy to yield for a moment. Okay. Mr. Carver then.
Thank you. So somewhere along the way over the last couple of weeks, I remember seeing an email from somebody who lived somewhere downhill from this property, expressing a concern about stormwater. Can you just address whether you have any concerns or whether, again, this is just something that's going to be carefully considered before any permits are issued?
It would be considered at plan review. As part of the state and the county regulations, they have to look downstream to a point called the 10% study point, which is where the site is 10% of an overall basin. That's the minimum requirements. In between that point and the site, they have to evaluate culvert crossings, say like the one at McDobbs, I mean, not McDobbs, Acworth D. West Road. So they'll have to evaluate that too and make sure that there's no issues with the capacity from their site causing any adverse effects to that structure. They have a detention pond shown and it will have to meet the current regulations before releasing into the string that's there now.
And just since this is more adult education and you trying to educate me anyway, can you just help me understand this 10% thing? Again, it would pertain to the, what the overall basin is flowing into a particular discharge point?
Correct. So if a site is 10 acres, they have to look downstream to where the basin is 100 acres at that point is where they have to study and show that the flow is at that point and in between their site and that point, that there's no adverse effects with flow and volume.
That's my only question for this witness or speaker. Anyone else?
Any other questions for Carl? All right. Thank you. I'll turn it back to you, Commissioner Ballen.
Thank you. Welcome to court. So my motion would be for recommendation of the application for rezoning substantially as made, subject to all county staff conditions and recommendations, including but not limited to those recommended by transportation and stormwater. The March 20, 2022 applicant and owner's joint letter of agreeable stipulations and conditions shall apply to the extent not inconsistent with those staff comments or those stated here and as modified by the superseding conditions and provisions. As to setbacks, all units shall include garages. The distance from the face of any garage, the closest point on the face of any garage to any curb or any sidewalk should be not less than 25 feet, and this is done so as to allow sufficient room for cars to be parked. Additionally, all garages should be wide enough to fit two cars with the final dimensions to be approved by the district commissioner. All driveways shall be wide enough to hold two cars with final width determined by the district commissioner on the final plan. As to paragraph 15 of that stipulation letter, there was a limitation on the Department of Transportation comment as to composition, and I'm deleting that and recommending the deletion of that and instead that the county standards as to width of the road be used in all circumstances with the final approval of the precise width of these roads to be determined by the district commissioner in consultation with our county Department of Transportation. Additionally, it is recommended that all guest parking be parallel, not perpendicular, based on a recommendation of county Department of Transportation staff, that that would be safer for persons living here, and I note in making that recommendation that the applicant has already agreed to that. And finally, I would ask and recommend that this matter be placed on the consent agenda at the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Second. Sorry, just had one question, Commissioner Ballen. Just on the requirement for driveways wide enough to hold, to hold two cars, just is that, is your understanding that the current site plan has...
Additionally, all garages should be wide enough to fit two cars with the final dimensions to be approved by the district commissioner. All driveways shall be wide enough to hold two cars with final width determined by the district commissioner on the, on the final plan. As to paragraph 15 of that stipulation letter, there was a limitation on the Department of Transportation comment as to composition, and I'm deleting that and recommending the deletion of that and instead that the, that the county standards as to width of the road be used in all circumstances with the final approval of the precise width of these roads to be determined by the district commission, district commissioner in consultation with our county department of transportation. Additionally, it is recommended that all guest parking be parallel, not perpendicular, based on a recommendation of county department of transportation staff, that that would be safer for persons living here. And I note in making that recommendation that the applicant has already agreed to that. And finally, I would ask and recommend that this matter be placed on the consent agenda at the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Do you have a motion on the table?
Second.
Sorry, just had one, one question, Commissioner Belong, just on the requirement for driveways wide enough to hold, to hold two cars? Just, is that, is that, is the, is your understanding that the current site plan has, does not meet that requirement?
No, and I've explained that to Kevin when I met with him on this. My, one of my sons, actually, when he lived in Charlotte, lived in a neighborhood where the driveways were not wide enough to comfortably hold two cars and you couldn't really even open your doors. Additionally, my, my son lives in Houston, his garage is so tight that you can't, a person of my width can't comfortably open the door and get out of the car on the left side. So when there's another car on the left, so just want to make sure that the garage sizes and the driveways are sufficient. And finally, in that Charlotte neighborhood, what I noticed is people were coming back and taking brick pavers or, or stones and basically creating a new pad, another foot or two wide to make their driveways wide enough. So I, I've seen where developers have done this, and I just want to make sure that that's taken into consideration in the final plan. I don't have any particular reason to think this, this applicant has intentionally submitted a plan which doesn't, which has insufficiently wide driveway, so it's not a reflection on the applicant.
Let me, so did we record Commissioner Dan's second? Okay, I just wanted to make sure this, this probably should have been in discussion with the motion on the table, so we have a second. Now we're in discussion, but so continue Commissioner Anderson's.
No, I was just seeking clarification if there was any other context around it. So thank you for explaining it. Sorry for the silly question, but.
Any other discussion on the motion that we had before? If not, I'll call the question. It's approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z18, Propco Liberty LLC requesting rezoning from GC to NRC for retail and especially contractor in landlot 660 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Liberty Hill Road, east of Canton Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z18?
Yes.
Let the record show that one, one person opposed.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you very much. Again, and for the record, my name is Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of Propco Liberty LLC, which is the owner of a 2.3 acre tract, some existing property located on Liberty Hill Road, just east of the intersection of Liberty Hill and Canton Road, and you see it highlighted on your screen there. This property also on its western bound, eastern boundary is the, is a railroad track that, that runs basically parallel to Canton Road for a good portion of the south end of Canton Road. This property, as you can see, is being proposed for rezoning from this existing general commercial or GC category to NRC. The property finds itself as in one of those situations that you see, some others may not be as familiar with it because it gets kind of, you know, inside baseball type of talk for, for zoning, and that is it's zone general commercial. The property, though, is in a neighborhood activity center on the future land use plan. So this property was built according to the GC standards at the time in the early 70s, probably before that. It was zone GC, operated as GC and general commercial for a very, very long time and was considered grandfathered because it has an existing two buildings on it and grandfathered for uses that were permitted under that GC classification. Just so happens, the larger building, which is a office showroom warehouse type building, that longtime tenant, which was American Family Day, if you ever used any parties or through any kind of parties that had jumpy's or other kinds of big party type arrangements, they were excellent at that. It was a longtime tenant in that building, and they left at the end of this past year. So this particular owner, in us looking at this, you have six months to fill that space back with a tenant that would be of the same use and maintain your grandfathered status after six months. You would lose that grandfathered status, but under the Cobb's ordinance says property would need to be brought back in for rezoning before any new tenant could go in, consistent with the land use plan. And that's a long way of saying that's why we are rezoning this from GC to NRC, because it is consistent with the neighborhood activity center for purposes of establishing this will be a new tenant, that will be a furniture store, and so consistent with permitted uses under the NRC category. If you take a broader look at this particular area, you'll see that there's a number of GC zonings. Those are legacy GC zonings that are still hanging around, but you'll also see a number of NRC zonings. You see that to our west, those properties fronting along Canton Road at the intersection of Liberty Hill. Those likewise had been zoned GC or now NRC. So you see some real transformation taking place where you're getting rid of those older categories and stepping into new categories where some improvements can be made overall as well as improvements to the, to the mix of commercial and neighborhood type retail establishments that serve the neighborhood and community at large taking place in this area, and that is what is proposed here. The, I'll turn to the site plan too, if you would, thanks. We had, as you can imagine where this is located, we've had very detailed discussions and meetings with Canton Road neighbors and residents that are very close to this property and very interested in how all of this area continues to be redeveloped, even if it's simply having new tenants and getting new fresh coats of paint and providing for a more detailed list of stipulations where properties had none from before. Our stipulation letter is dated in March 30th, and it is a detailed letter in that it incorporates many of the items that we have been requested to include as well as worked with the community to do so. Primarily, we do have a list of prohibited uses. These are uses that would otherwise be permitted under the NRC category. Those are primarily related to automotive type uses or related uses. Those are, would be prohibited here as a zoning condition. In addition, we have identified that certain special exception uses that would be applicable to the NRC category likewise are not going to be permitted here. We also have a number of other stipulations related to fencing and landscaping, and I want to turn to that so I can kind of illustrate where that's happened.
To orient you now to the plan itself, this is of the existing building and properties, buildings and properties. This is Liberty Hill Road and the railroad here. The primary building where American Family Day was located is here. It's a large metal building that has a covered loading area and docks here, office showroom type areas located here. There's also a smaller two-story small building on this portion of the property. That's currently occupied by a landscaping business, a landscaping contractor, who, who again is grandfathered for that use. But what we have agreed to do and what this owner, I think, has graciously agreed to do as part of our stipulation letter, that lease is going to expire at the end of January 2023. We will not be renewing that lease, and that landscaping business will relocate to another location. And that's placed in our stipulation letter, and that will further help to just generally clean up the site and move more neighborhood retail type businesses and uses into this general area as opposed to more contractor-based or more industrial or general commercial type businesses. So we've also agreed to that. In addition, when it comes to landscaping and fencing, we have agreed to install a privacy fence along the frontage on Liberty Hill. Right now, along Liberty Hill, there's just not much, and what we're going to be able to do is put in a nice privacy fence with landscaping at the entrances to kind of highlight that. It will enable the area to, again, take on a better, more visually appealing and attractive look, especially as you come from Canton Road on Liberty Hill into the residential neighborhood, which is east of this property. That privacy fence will actually wrap the property down to about this location, and then we'll continue that with a smaller black vinyl coated chain link fence for a small portion, or at least have that option where it's not visually seen. We also have a number of other stipulations that are listed as it relates to just the operation of the property and ensuring that it's operated as you might expect, and that is for a neighborhood retail business, not a contractor business or not a distribution type business.
We believe with these stipulations that we have crafted and worked with the community on, this does make for an excellent application. The staff's comments, we are in agreement with all of staff's comments, and specifically you have, DOT makes a couple of comments as it relates to improvements that would normally be associated with a rezoning of a new development that are triggered by redevelopment of this property, and we're agreeable to that. Again, this is a situation where this isn't some owner or a business or developer coming to a property and wanting to do a new project. This is an owner who has an existing building, and by virtue of the fact that Cobb County changed its ordinances effective 1996, in order for them, him to continue to rent that building and lease that building to new businesses, we have to come in for rezoning, and therefore those project type related improvements that you normally see, like a sidewalk or a curb gutter and so forth from DOT, those are going to be triggered by actual redevelopment of the site as opposed to simply somebody continuing to try to occupy a property that he has invested in. We're agreeable to those as stated by DOT and by staff, including Stormwater and DOT. We think, again, this application is exactly what's called for in your ordinance. Your ordinance calls for GC zone properties that are in neighborhood activity centers to be brought back before the county for rezoning, consistent with the land use plan, and that's what's occurring here as we're seeking rezoning to NRC. I think that's why you see also the supportive and positive comments from staff, including all departments, and ultimately their recommendation to you of approval. So we would likewise urge and respectfully request you as the planning commission to recommend approval of this rezoning application, subject to the March 30th, 2022 stipulation letter, including staff comments to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, we'll head from the opposition.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors, and here it is. I want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Moore and his client for working with us, and his stipulation letter very closely mirrors that of our own. There are some minor things, and what I'm going to, and we do, we would respectfully ask that you recommend approval of this. There are some minor things that could probably be cleared up, but there's one major thing, and this is more in the nature of a clerk's note. This is a photograph of Liberty Hill and subject property. You can see that there's some space between the curb and gutter and the fence. Staff notes that there are about 1,700 vehicle trips daily on this narrow 25 mile per hour road, which, once you cross the tracks, is residential in nature entirely. There's a small community near it, and there are people who actually walk up to Canton Road and cross the street to go to the new racetrack for coffee and whatnot, and not very many people observe the 25 mile per hour speed limit. And we know that staff calls for sidewalks upon redevelopment with certain criteria attached to that. We would also, and this is, this gives you some idea, they were swerving to avoid me standing there taking photographs. That's the situation. There's just, and there's really almost no place to get out of the way if you're walking. And, and this is the main gate, and you can see that there is, there is area there for sidewalks to be laid and that curb and gutter are in place. We don't really care who pays to build the sidewalks, but would ask that maybe if within a year or so, there aren't any provisions to trigger the applicants constructing sidewalks, we would really like for this to be put on the SPOLOST list, and we had, we've had an email conversation about this with the DOT and the commissioner very recently. At minimum, this needs to be on the SPOLOST list as soon as can be done because it's, you simply can't walk safely on this area, and people do walk, and it is a heavily traveled road. But other than that, we're very pleased with this application. It will improve the look of the area over what has been there, and we would respectfully ask that you recommend approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. This is also in District 3, so Commissioner Dan, we'll turn it to you to lead the discussion.
Does, does anyone on this board have questions for any members? Yeah. At this time, I would like to move for approval, subject to all staff comments and recommendations and stipulation letter of March 30th, 2022.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion on this from any Commissioners? If not, let's call the question. Okay, the motion for approval was approved by five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, and the last item on today's agenda is to consider adopting revised planning commission zoning hearing procedures, and I believe Mr. Johnson has provided you the copies of that revised document.
Members of the planning commission, we have been looking and reviewing these rules for a while. This process started actually years ago to streamline the various rules for the BZA, the planning commission, and eventually and hopefully the Board of Commissioners for the zoning hearings. The BZA adopted their version of these streamlined rules in December, so this is the opportunity for this body to consider these revised rules. The goal is to come into conformity for all three bodies that have jurisdiction over zoning issues, whether through the BZA and variances or the planning commission and ultimately the Board of Commissioners through the rezoning process, land use permits and special land use permits. So this is an effort that has been long coming. The language of, between BZA and the planning commission are as mirrored as possible, except for changes had to be made because, for example, you have no jurisdiction over variances. BZA has no jurisdiction over comprehensive land use review, anything like that, and those kind of things were removed out. But it, it's an effort to, to come into, to standard practice to ensure that, that our rules are reflective of what we're doing in these hearings. And again, the BZA adopted theirs in December, and this is the opportunity to consider for this board if that's the desire of this planning commission.
Thank you, Brian. All Commissioners, you have a copy of the rules and procedures, and we got this actually at our planning session, so I will.
Chairman, I believe there might have some public comment. Robin, did you want to have? Yeah, so let's allow the public to comment on this.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll open it up for public comment. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much. My name is Robin Meyer, and I'm with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. I'm sorry that I've not had a chance to talk with all of you individually about my, my issue here, because I did not know that the, until Friday, when I read the summary and consent agenda online, that there were any changes proposed to your procedures. So my apologies for that. But I have probably, for a period of four or five years, talked to some of you. I've talked to virtually all of your predecessors, members of the Board of Commissioners, members of the Law Department, members of the zoning division, probably just about anybody who wouldn't run off about what I think is a critical issue that has to do with the ability of the public to comment meaningfully on zoning applications. Right now, as your procedures and the BOC and the BZA, as your procedures set forth, the applicants and the members of the public, such as myself and my organization, have the same deadline for written comments, noon Wednesday before your Tuesday hearing. If the applicant's proposal were complete with its, with its original proposal, that would be fine. But the applicant's proposal is typically not really complete. But the applicant's proposal is typically not really complete until that Wednesday noon deadline, when the stipulations letter is due, and the elevations, and the revised site plan, and many of the other things that have been discussed and asked of the applicant while the application is pending. So it puts the public in a situation of providing input on the matter that's going to come before you without a complete picture of that application and of the discussion that's going to take forth, take place at the hearing itself. This could be resolved if the deadline for the applicant were before the deadline for the public. And so what we would propose is that the applicant's deadline for written comments be Monday before, two Mondays, eight days before your Tuesday hearing, and then the deadline for the public be the same, the Wednesday noon before the public hearing. It's 48 hours is not much. We're not asking for much. We're simply asking for the ability to see all that the applicant is, is going to put before you so that the written comments we provide you will be more useful. We won't be saying, gee, we want a privacy fence, when the applicant's already agreed to a privacy fence. We won't be saying, gosh, you know, we need to see elevations, when the applicant is, at the same time we're writing that letter, the applicant is filing elevations. It's simply a matter of, of good process so that we can do as good a job as we can do voicing the public's concern, and other members of the public can do the best job they can do voicing their concerns based on the information that's actually going to be considered at the hearing. So I know that that's not what you intended to do today. You intended to do just a simple housekeeping amendment to your procedures to, to, you know, resolve the issue, resolve the issues that bring you here. But I would ask that if, if this is something that is beyond the scope of what you can do today, that you either delay your decision today to incorporate it or open up a process by which we can begin to discuss these sorts of things in a more meaningful fashion. I would also ask a very simple question, which is how do members of the public learn about proposed changes to these rules? I have to confess that as much of a zoning nerd as I am, I don't read the legal ads in the MDJ, so if that's where it was, well, I missed it. And if you, I don't necessarily watch the recordings of your, of your work sessions. So I would also ask that as, as you move forward and make amendments to, to matters like this that are so important to those of us in the public, that you bring us into the process by at least providing a more meaningful notice of, of the opportunity to comment. So thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for the tough work some days and most days that you all do.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Appreciate it. Do we have another public comment?
Yes, I'd like to support Ms. Meyer in her recommendation. Most good zoning attorneys do give us their letters of stipulation timely, but a lot don't, and I think it's a good suggestion. I would hope that you would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that want to comment at this time? Okay, thank you. Brian, can we turn it back to you for some discussion based on what we heard in the public comment?
Well, I believe the issue here is, is about timeliness of, of submittals and then reviewed by the public, but then there would, in fairness, in all fairness, then there would have to be a time for the applicant to rebut or re-comment based upon what the public's comment is. So you start backing up into, you run, you just run out of time, and, and the goal of the rules, of course, is transparency and fairness for the public and for orderly conduct and organization for this body. I think if we start to contemplate adding additional time, then we, at what point does that end? You know, who, when is it cut off? So it's certainly up to the desire of this board, but I'd, I would recommend leaving it as is. If it's something that we want to look at, maybe at, you know, at another time, I mean, the rules can be revised as needed by, by this, by the Planning Commission. So if it's something to say, we'll adopt these today, we'll look and see maybe on those and address that at the end of the year, or we'll look at these rules once a year at the beginning, you know, at a timely fashion, it might be something to consider. So I would recommend leaving it as is and just in trying to fairness, but the question would be, at what point do we stop the timeframes for reviews by the, whether it's the applicant or the public? And I think that's the question that needs to be discussed.
Thank you for your, for your comment. I want to open it up to the Commissioners for some discussion on this, and so I'll, I'll recognize Commissioner Dance first.
Because you saw my finger on my butt. I personally have been a little concerned that the public sometimes seems to be the last to know as to matters that we're going to consider, and I believe that this board wants the public input into the process. And I don't think that the public ought to be held to the same standard as professionals who are here making presentations that they bring before the boards. I personally believe that some advanced timeline is appropriate, and my suggestion would be that we would ask the county attorney to work with zoning and actually look at that process and bring forward a recommendation, whether or not we hold this item for that time or ask that that be done and just bring it back on that point. I would appreciate the opportunity for the, as, as, as was said, for the public to be, have more notice and opportunity to participate, and I also think that it would be appropriate for that same request to cover, looking at, in these rules, is there meaningful notice to the public of other matters and, you know, particularly to the department, how the public learns about matters that are up for consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Bellone.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I, I support the, the comments from the community and from Commissioner Dance, Planning Commissioner Dance. I would suggest that the way to go about this would be to take Section 6, current Part B, modify that and create a specific deadline for receiving information from the applicant or those affiliated with the applicant would be the language I would probably look for there. Those in support or affiliated with the applicant by Monday instead of Wednesday of the week prior to the public hearing, and then create a new Paragraph C, a deadline for written public comment from, from the community and from, from anyone opposing, a similar paragraph that, that keeps the Wednesday deadline, and then change current Paragraph C to Paragraph D under Paragraph 6. I think that would accomplish the goals suggested by the persons who spoke before us, and I think would be consistent with our goals that, that we've played by the whole time I've been here, which is to encourage and foster due process, and, and I can't tell you how many times we've sat here and we hear an opponent criticize something that's no longer part of the plan. So I think this would go a long way to, it, it won't make it perfect, but it will, it will certainly help streamline the process and, and be consistent with the notion of due process.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment from Commissioners? Commissioner Hughes?
I'm sorry, I'll just say I agree with both my fellow Commissioners with respect to that. I think a minor tweak to the submittals doesn't seem all that onerous from where I sit, so maybe staff has a different opinion, but I, I agree, and the idea of transparency, I think, is good, and that, and I don't see the back and forth. I think it's just one submits, the other submits, and then we consider the information as submitted. So that's where. One Scrivener's note, the table of contents would be a lot more helpful if we had page numbers on it. So if somebody can have page numbers to it, that would be very helpful, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Anderson.
I wanted to echo agreement with the comments by my fellow Commissioners. The one other area which may also be a path to consider is, to the extent that there is a desire to keep the existing kind of overlapping deadlines, if a case does get moved or advanced, at least, you know, have an explicit notation that there was material submitted like after the deadline. That could be potentially, if, if there were a strong desire to continue with the current timings, that allows at least any BOC members to at least have some notation that, hey, new information was considered and at the discretion of the PC that was not submitted, you know, at or, you know, at, you know, only presented at the, at the point of the hearing. The goal of that is really just to kind of surface that there was new information that came in after Wednesday, that maybe not, the public didn't necessarily have the same amount of time to digest that they would have had that information been in there prior. I still stand with the first solution, but I just recommend that as just always a consideration for the path where we do keep the existing Wednesday deadlines for both the public and the applicant as maybe a path forward, just for consideration.
So, thank you. Thank you everyone for their comments. I'll just, first, let me start by thanking Ms. Meyer and Ms. Brown for your, for your comments and very timely comments as we look to approve and update our rules and procedures. I think there's a general consensus that I hear around support for some of what was shared. In light of what we have on the agenda, I will entertain a motion for what the path forward should be.
I thank Mr. Chair and anyone pointing at me. So my motion would be that we request that the County Law Department draw up a, a, first of all, draw up a couple of changes, revisions to the proposed Planning Commission rules and procedures as follows. First, in the nature of what has been termed a Scrivener's matter, please include a, page numbers on the table of contents, and then as a, as a second matter, to please break out current Section 6B into a Section 6B and Section 6C to provide a Monday deadline for applicant's submittals, the Monday of the week before the public hearing, and then a deadline for other comment by that Wednesday, the week before the public hearing. So that would be my, my recommendation, that we ask Council to go back and, and make those revisions. With, with thanks to Council, because I'm, I'm one of those, with thanks to Council for their hard work, this being deemed to be generally a, a showing of affirmation rather than that of criticism, just happily, we received some public comment, and we think we can make it even, even better than it already was.
I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, so to clarify, to make these changes for review at the next work session.
Yes.
For consideration, again, by this, this commission at the May hearing.
That is correct.
And, and if I could ask, if we could have it in advance, I would appreciate it, just that section.
Any further discussion? If not, let's call the question. So all in favor of that proposal from five to zero? Thank you. And again, thank you to the community for, and the public for your comments. With that, there are a sec, a couple of minutes in front of the Commissioners. I'd like to take them one at a time and get approval. So first, we'll start with the minute from the March 1st, March 1st Planning Commission meeting. We have those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of zoning here for the Cobb County Plant Commission, date of March 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Dance. Any discussion? Call the question. Those minutes are approved. Second, we have minutes from the March 28th special call meeting, planning session, review session.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 28th special call meeting, review work session.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? If not, let's call the question. Okay, also approved, the minutes approved by a vote of five to zero. I believe that it's all the business for today's meeting. If such, I hereby call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.